All right, the hour is seven o'clock. I'm gonna call the City of Lake Elmo City Council meeting, November 21st, seven o'clock, to order. If you'll please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. So, the first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. I'm gonna request that on the agenda, we make a change and move item D. Swap item D and E, the public comments and inquiries in the presentations.
Second.
Everybody in support of that change? All right.
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second that. All those in favor of the amended agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, agenda is hereby approved. Item C is approval of the minutes from October 24th, 2023, November 8th, 2023, and November 14th of 2023. I'll entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The minutes from dates earlier referenced are hereby approved. Item D is now the presentations. A five-year service award for Mike Schwartz, and giving that presentation will be Chief Kales.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we honor Mike Schwartz and his five years of service with the City of Lake Elmo and the Lake Elmo Fire Department. Mike, why don't you come on up? So, Mike joined our fire department in November of 2018. It's five years today that he's been with us. While in college and prior to moving back home, he was a member of the Rapid Valley, South Dakota Fire Department for four years. He now helps manage his family business and is also a nurse at the University of Minnesota Medical Center. Mike is one of our department captains. He serves as our lead EMS instructor and is also our Relief Association president. He even, along with his dad and several other community members, built the table that's in our new station, our kitchen table. His fire service knowledge, experience, and leadership are vital to the department's operations. There's no questioning the impact Mike has had on the department and our community. Mike, congratulations on five years of service with the fire department and the city.
Okay, squeeze in a little bit. Thank you. Perfect. Thank you.
Are there any more other than the one, or just the one, Julie?
Just the one.
All right. So, based on some social media posts over the weekend, I had prepared a little bit for this anticipating more than one speaker tonight at our, at our public comments. But as a city, I think that, it seems that we've become not just a city, but a nation, which the person that shouts the loudest gets the most attention. And we've seemed to have forgotten that different people bring different attributes to the table. And just because someone isn't in agreement doesn't mean they're an enemy or necessarily wrong. Lot of discussion in the social media without necessarily all the facts, people jumping to assumptions and hyperbole. Council members, myself, know and appreciate the fact that we work for and represent the residents. In working with the council for the past three years, and Councilmember Hearn for close to a year, it has been my experience that each council member truly cares about each item that comes up for discussion. So with that being said, we're gonna, when we open public comments and inquiry, there is no comment back from the council. We take in the information, and if there's a response, then, then we ask staff to respond. Please be respectful and civil to the speakers, and let them speak without interruption. In this case, we just have one today, so would Superintendent Mike Funk please come to the podium and speak? State your address for the record, please, sir.
I am Mike Funk. I live at 1280 Nolan Avenue North in Stillwater. Mayor Kaydenhead, City Council members, City Administrator Hant, as I just stated, I'm Mike Funk, and I'm the Superintendent of Stillwater Area Public Schools. Since August, I've conducted presentations throughout the district about our building plan. During these engagements, I presented the background on the plan and had the opportunity to respond to questions from community leaders. Last August, we requested to present in Lake Elmo, and I was directed by the city administration to speak at a public comment session, so here I am. Bottom line, Stillwater Area Schools would like to invest $86 million in taxpayer dollars in Lake Elmo by building a school on 47 acres in the southern part of the community. Today, I will talk a little bit about the process to involve the community with the development and approval of this plan, and address concerns I heard from the council last week. First of all, some of you have never met me, so I'll provide a little bit of background. I've been a superintendent since 2005, primarily in outstate Minnesota. I also served 30 years in the Minnesota Army National Guard as a career infantry officer, where I retired as a colonel in 2018. In my career, I deployed for 19 months as a NATO peacekeeper. These experiences have taught me about the need for relationships that focus on the future rather than past grievances. Recent history tells us that in this district in particular, we have had our challenges in different communities. I see my role as your superintendent to help our communities to acknowledge the past and come together with solutions to meet the future needs of our students. To that end, community engagement is and has been key. Since November 10th of this past year, we've had 27 meetings with various groups in Lake Elmo to provide, provide feedback on how we can improve the learning environment for our students. I have attended almost all of these meetings. The successful referendum of November 7th validated this approach. Even with that support, I understand that there are some concerns from the council which I am here to address. Last week, I had the opportunity to get some feedback on, on the, the meeting that you had. One of the issues that came up was the council was concerned that the district had not spoken to them. As a superintendent, I take the lead from the community administration I work with. If I'm wanted in front of the council, I appear at their request. Before the election, we, we met with your city administration five times, and we weren't asked to meet with the council. Second, I heard connections about city water and the impact on the city allocation. Last Friday, I reached out to the DNR to discuss this issue. They said they're working on a potential solution, and we should receive further communication sometime after Thanksgiving. Location of the school. As a superintendent, I believe in transparency. We have been clear from the start of the referendum about the location of the school. Seventy percent, and I say again, seventy percent of those who voted from the Lake Elmo precincts approved the referendum with the proposed site identified by large signs on the ground. In today's divided political world, when have you seen 70% support of voters agreeing on anything? The need to rezone and update city plans. Cities rezone from time to time. I think you might even be doing that tonight. We are asking you to rezone so that our students have access to water and potentially sewer. We've been a partner for 100 years, and we are another government entity. We're different than someone coming here to make money for their business. We hope that our century-long partnership makes a difference. Help us keep our students safe by providing access to clean water. Finally, there were questions about what we were gonna do with the current school. Plan A, raise the school and sell the land. Plan B, tear down half or more of the school and convert the rest of the school to a new central office for the Stillwater Area Public School District. We're looking at the same concept in Bayport right now. Closing, couple, couple closing thoughts. I've been advising governing bodies for close to two decades. I understand the water issue that you are faced with and your need to comply with governmental regulations. I respect your stance on this issue. However, I believe we are close to a solution by working with the DNR. The need to rezone might be considered inconsistent for some council members. As a school district, we need to be consistent in our approach to policy. However, in my long experience, policies and plans are often modified based upon the changing needs of our world. Updating your planning document to keep our kids drinking water healthy in a school in your community is not too much to ask. As your superintendent, I'm charged with keeping our students safe. No site that we pick is gonna be perfect. We have worked with construction experts almost weekly for my year-plus that I've been in the district to vet different pieces of land. The location has been collaboratively selected by working with the City of Lake Elmo Administration. It has unanimous approval of the Stillwater Area Public School Board and significant voter support throughout your community. If we build in Lake Elmo, our plan is to do so at the proposed location. Thank you for this opportunity to appear before you. I'm hopeful that through an $86 million investment into your community, we can continue to collaborate to best meet the needs of our students and their families in Lake Elmo. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Funk. All right. Moving on to item F, which is the consent agenda. I will, I'll volunteer my voice for this. Item number two is approve payments and dispersments. Item number three, approve final plat extension, Emira Resolution 2023-115. Number four, approve MPCA grant agreement amendment for the Hamlet on Sunfish Lake Street and Utility Improvements. Approve, number five, approve MPCA grant agreement amendment for the 38th, 39th Street Neighborhood Street and Utility Improvements. Number six, approve pay request number 13 for Water Tower number three. Number seven, approve pay request number five for Old Village Phase Seven Street and Utility Improvements. Number eight, approve pay request number five for 2023 Street Improvements. Number nine, approve pay request for number four for 2023 Trail Improvements. Number 10, approve pay request number 11 for Parkview Cardinal Neighborhood Street and Utility Improvements. Number 11, accept public involvements, improvements, and approve security reductions for Union Park First and Second Edition. Number 12, approve plan review or job description and authorized job posting. Number 13, approve bulk water meter purchase. Number 14, approve city center change order number three. Number 15, approve city center slash Public Works addition pay request number 22. I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
A motion, and we have a motion by Councilmember Holt, a second by Councilmember Hearn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 The consent agenda is approved. Moving into our regular agenda, we have the opportunity to hear from Representative Mark Wiens, Discussion of the Metropolitan Governance Task Force Public Engagement Meeting.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, staff, and citizens. I'm Mark Wiens. I am your state representative for 41A. I live at 9393 55th Street North in Lake Elmo. Thank you for, for having me. I wanted to just give you an update on the Metropolitan Governance Task Force. It's a bipartisan task force established by the legislature this last session in order to take a look at the Metropolitan Council's governance model, its roles and responsibilities. It's bipartisan and bicameral. I'm excited to say that we're doing at least four public engagement sessions, and Lake Elmo has been selected as one of the sites. We'll be here on December 14th from noon to 2:00 to do our second public engagement interaction with, with citizens and with elected officials. So I just wanted to go through really the concept, the tone and the tenor, as well as the structure, the panel, RSVP process, PR, and coordinating instructions. And I'll do this in less than five minutes. Somebody set the timer. So, you know that this is serious, and, and we've had a discussion here tonight already with some of the things that have happened in the past that are creating concerns for right now. One of the things with the Metropolitan Council and our task force is to ensure that the situation Lake Elmo sees itself in and is in today doesn't happen to any other community in Minnesota, especially in the metropolitan area, but statewide. So, our tone and temper, very similar to what you, what you have said tonight, Mr. Mayor, just about for, for comment and no replies. Our chair, which is, who is Chair and Representative Frank Hornstein, will be here. He will run this as though it was a committee meeting at the State Capitol, where he will recognize people. There will be an RSVP process. People will have a selected amount of time to state their case, and it must be germane to the issue of the Metropolitan Council governance, roles, and responsibilities. And then he will cite people, give them an opportunity, but they will be respondent to him. And expectation management. There won't be any replies. This is public engagement for comment that will be recorded into the record. If people would like to have their comments recorded, but they do not want to speak, we have a written process for that. And if time allows, we'll have it read into the record. Otherwise, it will be admitted as a written record. Structure. What we plan to do, it's a two-hour session. There will be 10 minutes for introduction and explanation by the, by the panel, 50 minutes for elected officials. There's at least 17 communities that we've invited, pretty much every community along the St. Croix, plus the cities of Stillwater, Oak Park Heights, as well as Woodbury, and there may be Forest Lake and White Bear Lake may also join us. But there's at least 17 communities. We see probably about a maximum of three minutes per mayor or elected individual, depending on how many people RSVP, there may be time for more members to speak during the elected official portion. The, the second 50-minute portion will be for public comment for citizens that have RSVPed. They'll get two minutes apiece, and they'll abide by the same process. The final 10 minutes will be closing comments by the panel. So, who's on the panel? Well, our chair, Representative Frank Hornstein, who will be running the process, Mayor Kaydenhead, as well as the Washington County Commission Chair Gary Kreisel, also Commissioner Carla Bigum, who is also a member of the Metropolitan Governance Task Force, representing all the metro counties, myself, and then from the business community, Will Schrover from the East Metro Strong will be those six-member panel that will be here. The rest of our task force members that are onboard will be at the Capitol, and they will be zooming in. So there's a technology piece there. We have sent an invitation to the two Met Council members that represent this area. So that is Gail Cedarburg and Sue Vento. We don't know if they'll be coming or not, but we've given them invitation. They will have a non-speaking role, but they'll be present to hear comments. RSVP. This is probably the most important thing, to be able to use the technology again in RSVP. I think the whole council and some of the staff have received my initial tranche of emails on RSVPing. It takes about 20 seconds, gets people into the right spots so that we've, we've got you queued in. I'll continue to do that with all the communities until I've made certain I've had contact with all the mayors or township chairs to make certain they have the opportunity to focus in. Also, for the general public, we'll have press releases going out in the newspapers, the Stillwater Gazette, as well as Forest Lake, Cottage Grove, and White Bear Lake. So that will be going out within the next week, where you can reg, the public will see that where they can register. And my final thing is coordinating instructions. Basically, we haven't done one of these yet, and we're kind of flying by the seat of our pants, but with the technical help of Ms. Hant and also Taylor Kohler, who is our administrative assistant at the Capitol, I think we'll be able to figure out all the technology issues. Roughly, the MGTF will be the, in operational control of all the RSVP, the speaking and those kinds of things, whereas we look forward to the logistical support from, from Lake Elmo for public safety and seating and those kinds of things. At this point, I want to just say thank you for allowing me to speak, and I look forward to seeing you all here on December 14th, noon to 2:00, and partake. So, happy Thanksgiving.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember McGinn.
Representative Wiens, could you briefly, for our public, could you briefly talk about the content you might be looking for and feedback from the community themselves regarding the Met Council? I mean, they have a broad umbrella.
They have a broad umbrella. So typically, it's transportation, regional parks, it is community development, and then wastewater. Those are the four large things. Each of our public engagement events are in different locations in the cities. Minneapolis is really gonna be transportation-heavy. Ours is probably gonna be community development and water issues-heavy. So when the public comes in to testify, we ask them to be germane to a specific role that the Met Council has, whether it's positive or negative. There are, there are positive things as well, things that we don't want to change that, that the Met Council does, does well. But there are other things where we have, we've cited where there's an interest in making some changes. So it should be related to the governance piece, the roles and responsibilities of those different tasks.
And will that information be available? I know you talked about a public piece that's going to be going out.
In the press releases that we do, Councilwoman, we, it will explain that, and then, not just the RSVP, which is very important, but also how we will, we want to receive the information, so people can prepare for that.
Great. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Holt, sorry.
Thank you. Representative Wiens, just a question on terms of logistics and timeline. So this is happening here, there'll be other meetings. How will this task force, based upon how it is codified in statute, in terms of role and responsibility? You're gonna compile it, report it back to the Met Council. How's that process work? What is required, and what's, what are you able to do that's maybe not necessarily explicitly said, but you might be able to do?
So, so in the public engagement portion, we're, we're just receiving information. We're going through, we've, we've been established, we're almost at the midpoint where we've had reports from other cities that have similar structures, and taking a look at what is in the art of the possible. So we will take this information, and then we will craft legis, a, a bill to go into both the Senate and the House when we're back in session in February. So, I can't tell you what that's gonna look like, whether it's gonna be a big fix, whether it's gonna be a small fix, or it'll be something.
Is, so is that a situation similar to, you know, state agencies get to write Form As, and it's pretty much assumed that it gets a hearing? Is that the case here as well, that either way, what is produced here will at least get a hearing at, at the end of the day on your end? Or is that not, can that presumption not be made?
No. That, that, this is, this will be the hearing, in the sense of you will provide information, and then we will take all of the different public engagements, and that'll be part of the record.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative Wiens. Item number 17 is public improvement hearing, order improvements in preparation of plans and specifications for the street and utility, or for the 2024 street and utility improvements.
We're here tonight to conduct the public improvement hearing for the 2024 street utility improvement project. On October 17th, the council accepted the feasibility report for this project and called the hearing. Following that meeting, staff sent out individual notices to the homes, noticing for the meeting as well as publishing in the local paper. We did come back on November 8th and asked for an update to the feasibility report. We had found a cost correction, and so we, so on the 8th, the council did also amend the revised feasibility report. And then on November 9th, we did hold neighborhood meetings for each of the two neighborhoods in the project that, and was able to go through the information, which included the revised information as well. So the 2024 street and utility improvement project includes two neighborhoods, shown on the location map here. One's the, along, the homes along Jamica Court North, and the other one's the carriage station neighborhood. This is the schedule I was just sort of reviewing with you of where we've been, going back to the authorization of the feasibility report in April. So we've gone through the acceptance of the report, the neighborhood meetings, and that brings us here tonight to hold a public improvement hearing. And should the project continue to go forward, following the hearing, the council will be presented with a resolution to order the improvements and initiate the plans and specifications. So the plans and specifications is, is the part where you start investing more money into the engineering. Everything's been done today, has been sort of desktop review study, high level, trying to keep the costs down until a decision's made to go forward with the project. And then the schedule we're following here is really set to hit the ground running for construction in the spring. So the two neighborhoods were selected and programmed into the capital improvement plan based on a variety of different topics. One of them that plays into it is the existing road condition. So in the feasibility report, we present what the existing conditions are. The carriage station neighborhood rose to the top as having very, streets in very poor condition to a failed condition, as shown by this. Jamica Court was a little bit better, but still the roads were deteriorating pretty quick and will continue to deteriorate. And then there was also some water main improvements scheduled to be done as well, so that's why that project was coupled for 2024. So the feasibility report lays out the proposed So the feasibility report lays out the proposed improvements for each neighborhood. And so in the Carriage Station Neighborhood, the first thing that we talk about is a potential for a water main upgrade for a segment along Marquez Lane. We have a twelve-inch water main coming into and through the neighborhood, and a twelve-inch water main, or a sixteen-inch water main over by well number two. And there's a short piece of water main segment that's only an eight-inch. There's a separate study. It's in progress right now, evaluating the long-term use and benefit of well number two, and we hope to have that completed in the next month or two to know whether this water main improvement should go forward. So we presented it into the feasibility report as something to go forward, assuming that the conclusion is to continue well number two for years to come. So we would upgrade that piece to a twelve-inch pipe.
Just a question on that. Is that related to whether or not there can be a temporary treatment thing tied to well number two or not?
Yeah, so the eight-inch, if we're just doing, if we're going to keep well number two on just a temporary basis, we probably don't need to upgrade the main. It's been working for years, and it continues to work with the eight-inch line. But as the population continues to grow, and water use continues to grow, and we're trying to push more and more water through it, so we're looking longer term. If we're going to keep well number two, then we're going to want that piece of pipe to be larger.
Got it. All right. Thank you.
So the main part of the improvements, then, is the street improvement project. And we did have, for the benefit of the feasibility report, we did spend the summer having a geotechnical investigation report done for the neighborhood. Quite a bit of work was done, including ground penetrating radar, falling weight, deflection testing, and corings, along with soil borings in different areas. So a lot of different geotechnical analysis done. The conclusion was that a full-depth reclaim would be a good improvement for this area. So we're really showing a full-depth reclamation project, which means we can go in with a machine and basically take out the top eight to ten to twelve inches of material, grind it up, and lay it back down as a recycled base. So you're not stripping out material, hauling it away and hauling in brand-new gravel. You're using what's on site, recycling it, and putting it back in place. And then you're paving a new batuminous surface over that. We had both the geotechnical firm and we had a senior inspector walk the neighborhood and review the existing conditions of the concrete curb and gutter, and found that it's, for the most part, it's in very good shape. We identified about seventeen to twenty percent of the curb that would need to be replaced. So the proposal here is to just do spot replacement. So you just cut out the pieces that are defective and basically hand-put back in those pieces. So it does mean that the roadway stays really much in place exactly where it is. The center line stays, the edges stay, because a lot of the curb is staying where it's at. So you do that spot placement, and then you'd come through and grind the road up and put it back in place. One of the other, we did look at the roadway widths, looked at geometric configurations, how does the roads flow, and we didn't see or identify any need to change anything throughout the neighborhood. The one thing that Public Works had identified that's shown in orange up by the Carriage Station Park was a desire to have more dedicated parking space. So we were looking at adding a parking bay in that location. I have a slide to detail that a little more here next. So I added this slide because there tended to be, after I did the neighborhood meetings, there tended to be a lot of questions about that, people indicating there was a parking lot, people indicating it was something else. And really, alls it is, is that orange section I'm showing there, running along right after you get past the trail entrance, it's just to start to do what I call bump-out parking. So you just take the curb line, and you would widen the roadway in that area, something about eight feet. And then you just pave that extra area, and that gives a dedicated area that those cars pull over. And then you'd have a high-back curb up against the park area, so that people aren't pulling over onto the grass anymore at that, in those locations. What we're showing there, so again, we haven't done design level yet, but what we're showing there is about one hundred and seventy-five feet long, that would accommodate seven to eight cars, that would just parallel park on that space in that area. It's only about fourteen hundred square feet. We're thinking it's about twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars for the added cost to put that in. The road there is twenty-eight feet wide, so we have done roads there allow parking on one side. So you could forego that and still try to fit parking in there, but I guess what I'm hearing from Public Works is there's been some problems. Part of it's related to the surmountable curb that people are then rolling up over and pulling, because of the feel of the road feels narrower, and then the surmountable curb there, they're pulling up onto the grass and running out behind the curb and causing that. So the other option would maybe be just to put high-back curb right along there and still allow parking on one side.
I can confirm, you know, I live in this neighborhood, so it's true. People do climb up on the surmountable and park on the grass, and I think this would go a long ways to help that situation.
And then one more point that I know has come up was, there was a lot of emails that went back and forth about how many trees were going to get lost. And for this improvement, there aren't going to be any trees lost. There's, you see two sets of trees that are in this aerial. One's the ash trees that have already been removed, and then the conifers that are all there are about sixteen to eighteen feet behind the curb, and we're only talking about bumping it out about eight feet. So we wouldn't be losing any additional trees for that, a part of the improvement. These are just the two pavement sections that we have in the feasibility report, the one showing the full-depth reclamation, which is for the whole neighborhood. And then the full pavement section would be along Marquez Lane if we were to put the water main in. If we disturb the road and have to put trenching in to put a water main in, then you no longer can do the reclaim. And so we have to haul those materials out and haul in engineered gravels and sands or whatever to build that road base for that portion of the roadway. And that's just the typical city standard. And then when we're done putting the road project back together, we've been taking a look at the neighborhoods from a parking standpoint. Most of these older neighborhoods in Lake Elmo were all put in without regard to signage, and so we've had, we're addressing them as we go through the street improvement projects. Cul-de-sacs, whether they have center islands or not, are typically signed no parking on both sides. So that's why you see the double yellow circles around the three cul-de-sacs. And then the entranceway with the divided roadway, and then trying to keep that more left for two-way traffic coming in on the entrance, we're recommending that be signed no parking, where you see the yellow. And of course, then we're going to create the dedicated parking bump-out for about seven to eight vehicles there. So moving on to the Jamica Court North neighborhood, this is a little bit, the exhibit's a little bit small. What we're trying to show here is, again, the water main improvement. Right now, the neighborhood, the fifteen homes there are served by a four-inch water main, and so we do want to upsize that to provide fire service as well. And this is also finishing off a trunk water main improvement that the city needs to run across Stillwater Way. We have another project in design as well, so that we would make that connection and get that twelve-inch line run through the neighborhood. So the intention is to install the water main, replace the four-inch in place, and connect it, and get the new services out to the curb stop for those, each of the fifteen And then following that, it would be, again, through the geotechnical analysis, it was found that this could be a reclaim project. This is a rural section road, however, so we would be, we would go through and we would reclaim the material. We would put in a concrete ribbon curb on both sides of the road, and then put a new batuminous surface down, again leaving the road at its existing width, which is twenty-four feet. So this is the section of that road showing how it's a rural section. Drainage is handled through a ditch that runs along the front of each of all the homes. So we would be maintaining the drainage system as it's in place. There would be disturbance of the ditch and driveway culverts. They would get kind of beat up or destroyed when we put the water main in, and also doing the reclaim. And the goal would be to survey that and put it back in place as it is. And then again, with the no parking, the post-construction no parking designation, with twenty-four feet wide, we believe it's important to sign this street no parking on one side. And then also at the Hammerhead Turnaround, that needs to be preserved for no parking, so that emergency vehicles or anyone getting to the end of that has the room to turn around. This is for illustration purposes here. On which side we picked, that the side that we would actually sign would be determined in the design and through the fire department and Public Works driving, making the determination of which one they would prefer to see have the vehicles parked where they are. So after we define the scope of improvements in the feasibility report, we do cost estimates of what those improvements are, and then we run that through the city's special assessment policy for public improvement projects. And part of that process is first identifying who benefits from the projects. In both neighborhoods, they're existing water customers. So all the water main work we've talked about here tonight is just being paid for out of the water fund. There's no additional assessments, no additional cost being borne by the property owners for any of the water main improvements. For the street costs, we assess homes or properties that gain access directly to the street that's being improved, so that we're looking for driveway access of which street is accessed. So we have one hundred and nine residential homes in the Carriage Station Neighborhood that all access these streets. We also have the park, and we have the church there that has a driveway access to the entrance roadway. So the total estimated project cost for the Carriage Station Neighborhood was just a little over two-point-six million. You can see right below that, the breakdown between the street and storm sewer repair, which is about two-point-two-seven million, and then the water system upgrades was about three-hundred-and-fifty thousand. What we do then is we take the two-point-two million, and we take thirty percent of those costs, and we assess those to residential properties. And then they're assessed on a per-unit basis. So we have one hundred and nine residential properties. We have one park that's about, that was found to be three equivalent units, or three assessable units. And then you have non-residential properties. We have one of those, which is the church, and non-residential properties are assessed at a hundred percent of the total project cost on a linear foot basis. So the first thing we do is we determine the church assessment by taking a per-foot cost for, throughout the whole project, and then figuring out their portion of the project, which came out to be forty-eight thousand one hundred. We take that off the two-point-two-seven-four million, and then we take those remaining costs, we multiply it by thirty percent, and then divide it by the hundred and twelve units, because you have the one hundred and nine residential homes and the three assessable units for the park. And that came out to be a six-thousand-dollar unit assessment rate.
Yeah. So given that the actual ownership of the park is, I mean, it's attested by the HOA that it's city-owned, that was turned over, and there's some paperwork, this number will change once that's identified as a city park and not an HOA park, correct?
Actually, no, because we do assess our, we do assess the city parks as well. So the parcel is going to be assessed, and going to be assessed as part of the project, regardless of who owns it.
Right, but it wouldn't be assessed to the HOA.
It just won't be assessed to the HOA. It'll become, that eighteen thousand, six thousand per unit will just become a city cost.
Got it. All right.
But in calculating the six thousand, it's still.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Lastly, the assessments, street and drainage improvements, so it's a six-thousand-dollar unit assessment rate, and street and drainage assessments are levied over a fifteen-year period at a bond rate of one percent over what the city bonds for, which has been the last year about five percent, I think, in that range. So in the, I don't expect anybody to read this, but in the feasibility report, there's an assessment roll, and all this is showing is every property that's listed, that's being part of the assessment roll, and then what that assessment amount is. So it has your legal address, your name, and then the assessment amount. And this can be found on the city website and downloaded. It's in the feasibility report. It's also a separate document on the website. The Carriage Station edition is a two-page document showing all of those properties and those assessments. And then moving on to the Jamica Court North, again, we have fifteen properties that have driveway access to the street. You can see the one in the upper-left corner has a driveway access to Jamica, so it's not part of the assessment. So here we have all residential properties. We have a total project cost of eight-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand dollars. Of that, the street and drainage improvements is just about four-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand. So we take that amount times thirty percent, divided by fifteen, and the unit assessment for each of those fifteen properties is eighty-five-hundred dollars. It should also be noted that these are preliminary assessment amounts, and so we will go through, assuming the project moves forward, it will go through construction. We'll track all the costs. If the project comes under budget, there's an opportunity to lower these assessments. If the project goes over budget, they can't go up. So they stay, they cap at this amount for the property owners. And then again, we have an assessment roll that's from the feasibility report for those fifteen properties. So with that, these are the findings and recommendations summarized by the report. Basically, the streets are beyond their useful service life and are ready for improvement at this time. Summarizing the geotechnical findings, that the reclamation is the right improvement for these areas. We're recommending that the bump-out parking be proposed along the station, Carriage Station Park. We're recommending that the post-construction no parking designation plan be implemented as part of the project. Drainage and storm sewer improvements, I didn't mention them as I went through it, but we will be looking at flare-damp sections, cleaning out brush, cleaning out sediment, picking up riprap and putting it back down. There's one pipe that we found a hole in that needs to be lined in the Carriage Station Neighborhood, so there's some repair work like that. Manhole castings and things like that will be replaced. So we will be restoring and fixing up and repairing the storm and drainage systems. The water main upgrades are being recommended as proposed in the report, and yet we'll be coming back to the council later this year on the final determination on that water main upgrade in Carriage Station. And then it's recommended that the assessments be levied in accordance with the feasibility report and the preliminary assessment rolls that have been presented, and that they're assessed over fifteen years at a bond rate plus one percent over what the city bonds for. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Councilmember McGinn. Just a question regarding the reclamation. Is it a better product that you use by tearing up the street and using that product? Is it kind of the same as just the Class Five or whatever they used to use on it? I mean, can you talk about that a little bit?
It is pulverized and ground up to a Class Five aggregate. So you are simulating that with the existing materials. You know, it's not quite the same product if you did a full recon, because you are only going about, you know, eight to ten inches deep, whereas when we go for a brand-new construction, you're putting in at least a foot, sometimes two feet of sand, then eight inches of gravel, then batuminous. So you're going down three feet and doing an engineered, uniform soil. So part of the geotechnical investigation that we're doing is we're curious what's even below that, that ten inches that we're going to be at, and is that subgrade stable enough? Because it's not as uniform, but it's still, if it's stable enough, then we feel confident that we can move forward with that.
And if you get in there and find out that it's not, then we'll just continue to fix that and cost-wise?
We know, we know it is enough. We always expect soft spots, so we build into our cost estimating about, you know, a twenty, twenty-five percent sub, what we call subgrade correction. So we know when we get in there, we'll find soft spots. And so then we identify those, and we go in and we do some overexcavation and building up the support in that subgrade area before we build the base.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Holtz?
Thank you, Jack, for that presentation. Going back to Carriage Station with well number two, just a quick question. You mentioned that there should be some study results coming up within the next month. Will part of that also reflect upon if Will part of that also reflect upon if we not only go to a temporary filter, but say we were to think about a permanent filter down the road? Is part of this study also determining, is that even possible, given that that would require a sewer connection? Or is that so far down the road in terms of steps and decisions that that's not even a part of this study for feasibility?
It is part of the study. I don't, it's, the study is more focused on how quick can we get well two on temporary treatment, and how is that going to work, and what are those costs, and do, is this, is this worth jumping into and getting that up and online? That's the primary focus of the study, but when talking with the MPCA and the grant, they, you know, we are looking at, we have this opportunity when we're looking at this, is what would a, what would a permanent facility look like in this location as well?
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any further questions for Jack? Are you going to entertain a motion to go into the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
So we have a motion and a second to go into the public improvement hearing. They ordered improvements, preparation plans, specifications for the 2024 street and utility improvements. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Going into the public hearing at 9:00, 7:50. Those of you that are here representing those neighborhoods, if you wish to speak at this time, you're welcome to approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and state your comments.
I just have one quick question for clarification. My name is Dave O'Neil. I live at 5168 Marquez Trail North in Carriage Station.
Thank you.
And a question, just a clarification. I heard two, two facts, I'm not sure how they synced. One was that there would be no changes to the roadway, other, after the reconstruction, everything would be put back the same way. And then I also heard that there'll be, the existing road will be torn up, recycled, laid down, and then paved and put over the top of that. Does that mean that the resulting road surface will be elevated a few inches from where it is now? And this, so does that mean all the piping is going to have to be extended up for that purpose?
Jack?
Okay. Now, the, so the curb lines are staying in place because we're salvaging the curbs. And then, we're just, so we're cutting the road out between the curbs, recycling the material. It does puff up, and there is excess material that gets hauled away. Sometimes we also increase the crown a little bit to lose some of that material and help the slope is in the center line, but for the most part, it's, it's minimal movement in the, in the roadway profile.
So it's a combination of maybe a little crown increase, or, what do they call that? The final cutting for the final grading?
Yeah.
That they might do on the top layer to maintain that joint at the curb line?
Correct. And, and as far as the structures, there's no structures or pipe movements. The top castings, we use, we have extra manhole rings for adjusting those, so those are adjusted by a matter of a few.
Maximum of two.
Inch or something like that, so.
Maximum of two rings?
Right.
Councilmember McGinn.
So would you also get compaction? I mean, as, as a new road, would, am I correct to assume that within a year or so after cars continue to go over it, that you'll get some compaction to bring that back to a similar height?
Well, the road is, the road is compacted before you pave over it, so.
So that there won't be any continued compaction at all?
The ideas do not see movement to the road.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So the goal would be to get that 100% compaction, so that you don't get the sediment and cracking in your new pavement?
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
My name is Cliff Boujot. I live at 12187 Marquez Lane Cove North in the Carriage Station development. I have several questions and comments, so bear with me as I work through these. With this roadwork being limited to reclamation or pavement recycling, and about 18% of the curbing being retained, I'm wondering when a revised project calendar will be communicated? It seems like the calendar extending this all the way through the end of September is excessive. Granted, we're in the preliminary stages of understanding what the design and getting estimates, and which contractors will bid on them, and what their timeframes are, but it is certainly my hope that this can be done in a compressed fashion rather than extend it out from the end of May all the way through the end of September. So I'd like to ask that that be considered, strongly considered, so that we can maybe do this in two months or something, instead of almost four. Another question for the city engineer, what is the best guesstimate for how long this proposed work should take, assuming that the average weather conditions are existing, and with some rainouts, whatever that might be? Just wondering what your estimate is for that. Another question here, what contingency plans are being formulated? Should final decisions on well number two not be available by the time this project goes for bid? I think that could be a key, key thing here. So I would encourage everyone to think about what those contingency plans should be. Is this project going to be pushed back or delayed? Do you have to come back and tear up a street that you already paved? I hope not. And I know that the city engineer in this council will avoid having to come back and tear up a street if it's at all possible, but I'm just calling out the need for contingency plans on that. Next, talking about the bump-out parking for the park. And maybe this isn't necessary based on what the engineer recently shared about the fact that this cost for this bump-out will be borne strictly by the city, and not be split up among the 109 property units in the, in Carriage Station. Maybe to add transparency to that, those estimates for all of that bump-out work be itemized and displayed separately within the bids that contractors are asked to submit. We've already talked about the trees and being able to save those, so that's great. There was an item about the assessment being payable over 15 years at 1% over the city's bond rate. It didn't talk about paying the assessment in full before it goes to be certified to property tax rolls. I'm assuming both of those things apply, right?
Yes, sir.
So, like to make sure that we itemize that in there as well. Parking and the decision to install no parking signs in cul-de-sacs. I live in one of the cul-de-sacs, one of the three. Currently, the development is signed, the development, I believe this sign is at the entrances to the, to the development. Signed for no parking during the winter months of November 1st through, I believe it's March 31st. That's as it should be, very understandable, I get it. Both my spouse and I do not support no parking signs on our residential street, emphasis added. We do not have a problem with too many cars parking on the street today. I believe I can speak for all of my cul-de-sac neighbors. No one wants a no parking sign at the curb in their yard. We have a nicely landscaped center island and don't want a no parking sign in the island. Guests that homeowners have over at their homes should be able to park on the street without fear of being ticketed. And after all, this neighborhood has been doing just fine without no parking signs for over 22 years, and it's a public street. I fully understand the need for emergency access, and yet, we don't have a problem with cars, too many cars parking on the street. So to add these no parking signs, I think, is not called for. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak and for your consideration on all of these items.
Thank you. Matt, can you talk to the best estimate on time needed for the construction of these? I know that we've done many of these throughout the city over the course of the years, and we probably have a pretty good idea on how many, how much construction can happen and what time period.
Yeah, it's, it's probably a six-to-eight week project from start to finish. However, you know, the schedule that we lay out is we just leave ourselves with the summer at the feasibility level. When we go into design, we can look a little more carefully at what, what the dates are, but how we, how we manage our schedules is we try to leave them as flexible as possible. What we try not to do is cut out the competition. When you go to bids, you'll have two kinds of contractors. You'll have contractors that have just won two or three bids and are hitting the ground running, and they aren't, they're, they're not going to have crews available until August. And you'll have contractors who lost those bids and are hungry and want to start right away. So if you pick a window and, and put that into your plans and specs, you start to, you start to deplete your, your competitive competition.
Have you ever, have you ever done it where you've opened the window for it to be completed, but once you start, it needs to be done?
That's in every one of our specs. So what we do is we try to leave them, we leave them the end of the year to get the construction done.
Right.
But we, yeah, they're not allowed to come in and tear up the street and then go work somewhere else and leave it.
Right.
Leave it unpaved for the duration.
So they have X amount of working days, or whatever you put in the contract?
Correct, correct.
Got it.
Councilmember Hearn.
A little switch here, to talk about well number two findings, with some of the concerns of depending on the findings. Can you maybe talk a little bit about potential findings that might come from that study that we're doing right now, and how that would impact this plan, one way or the other?
Yeah, it's, it's really just simple, do we, what we're, what we're, want to make a decision on is do we see well twos? Right now, we're looking at using well two as an emergency well until we have treatment, and we're looking to put temporary treatment on it so that we can continue to use it till we get our future wells up and running. What we want to do is take that longer view and decide, is well two a long-term well that we're always going to use, even 10, 20, 30 years from now? Or is it going to get weaned off our system for whatever reason, because it's up in the corner, it's lacking wastewater, and every time we change out media filters at that expense of, of changing, changing that out and hauling those materials, because we don't have a wastewater disposal, is, is cost prohibitive? If it, if it just ends up being kind of, for a lot of reasons, a well that's just not going to get very utilized, then we probably don't need to go to the expense of changing that water main size. So that's what, we want to kind of get to that point and make a, an informed decision on the future use of that well.
And we should know the results of that study prior to making a.
We're going to.
Decision, or we could switch if we end up doing the, the larger pipe, or if we keep it at the eight inch.
Yeah, we're, the, the first round of that well-two study is due here really quick. We're going to get that in the next couple of weeks. I expect it to be, you know, a back-and-forth between us and the engineer a couple times. It depends what those findings are. I mean, we could still be sitting here at the end of this, still not real certain about the long-term future, because there could, you know, it's going to come with a set of pros and cons. Or the cons could be so strong, it's just like, yeah, this is not going to be long-term. And so, we'll, we'll have to, once we have those findings and we know how strong they are, we'll have to.
But basically, the, the most expensive option is already priced into.
That's correct.
This current bid, or the, excuse me, the.
That's correct. We're planning to, we're planning to do the water main, and we're planning to reconstruct the portion of street for that water main, and that's, that's built into the project.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember.
Maybe just with the cul-de-sac concern, I.
Talking about the no parking?
The no parking, if, yeah, if the chief maybe wants to speak on that as far as the, because I think that is the, the main concern with it, is being able to get the fire engines around the cul-de-sac or emergency vehicles.
The cul-de-sacs we have in some of these developments, especially with the center islands, do pose a, a pretty significant challenge for us to get around when there are cars parked in any of those cul-de-sacs with an island. The, the vehicle movement is nonexistent. We haven't specifically, we don't have exhibits for this neighborhood, but other projects, we've done drive-throughs and, and shown how truck movement just is frankly impossible. And I know Public Works has the same issues with snowplows, and, you know, we, we have challenges with these, with these neighborhoods and, and the roadways with emergency response, there's no doubt.
Okay.
Any further questions?
Nope.
We're good. Thanks. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Can I all speak?
Yeah, it was, it's been open. If you want to speak, please come up, state your name and your address. Thank you for speaking up.
All right, my name is J.C. Rivera. I live in 9055 Jamaca Court North. I promised my wife I wouldn't embarrass her. I, I live in a street with 15 houses. I don't think anybody wants this. I don't think anything's wrong with our road. Curbs are going to make removing the snow more difficult. Any truck that comes to deliver is going to destroy them when they turn around. There's barely any traffic that goes through our street. Also, I have no idea how I'm going to pay for this. Ever since I moved to Lake Elmo, it's been levy after levy, and those signs are going to be ugly as hell. No one parks in our streets. When someone has a party, we talk to our neighbors, let them know, and sometimes we even use each other's driveways if we have too many people over. Again, I don't see the need for this. This kind of thing is just driving people out of your town.
Mr. Rivera, just a point on the, the curbing. The type that's been proposed for that street is what's called a ribbon curbing, so there's really no elevation. It's flat with the asphalt itself, so it wouldn't be like a high-back curb or a transfer, or a mountable curb. It's flat with the pavement. It's just a section of concrete to help keep the edges of the batuminus or the, the roadway from ravelling and, and falling apart.
All right, another concern is, if I don't have money to pay for this, what's the option? Also, what happens when you guys decide that you want to hook us to sewer, and you're tearing the street apart again? We all have septic tanks, septic systems. So you do this this year, and ruin the summer with construction vehicles and all that stuff in our street, and then five, 10 years down the road, decide that Lake Elmo's grown so much, and now we have to hook up to sewer. Is that something that might be coming down the road in the future?
In the 2040 comprehensive plan, that area of the city is not within the MUSA area and does not have plans to ever be hooked up to sewer.
Good. All right. That's all I got.
Thank you.
To follow up, can either Jack or Administrator hand? Because it, it's been asked before with many, in many neighborhoods, I'm sure it's not unique to certain individuals, but for those who have questions about payments or payment plans, what options do exist in terms of? I know there's financial hardship processes, I know there's senior citizens and property tax deferral processes, but can you just speak to, if one has that concern, how they can bring it up?
They should contact the city finance director, Clarissa Hadler. She's worked through them, as you might remember, she brought one to you a couple months ago, so she knows all the details on that. And that's what we'd encourage folks to do, once they've, you've gotten to the final assessment hearing. Yep.
Thank you.
The, the prepayment options are all spelled out in all the notice letters and things that, that go out as well, so.
Right. All right, I'll ask again, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Can you get a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are back into open session. We are back into open session. Um, where we will go to item, or no, we have to have a motion.
Move to adopt resolution number 2023 dash 116, ordering the 2024 street utility improvement in preparation of plans and specifications for the recommended street drainage improvements as outlined in the revised feasibility report approved on November eighth, 2023.
Got a motion, can you get a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'll just say that I think the, the parking spaces, I thought that was a great concern. I thought the presentation was really helpful with understanding the tree situation. Um, I think that adding parking spaces is going to make that park more accessible, not only to the residents in this neighborhood, but I think it, or outside of this neighborhood, but within the neighborhood itself, to the houses further away. I think that's going to be a, a, a very good value, um, for the neighborhood, for the city. You know, the cul-de-sac concerns were brought up. I, and I know things have been fine. I just, they're fine until they're not. And I, I feel that the cul-de-sac, um, no parking is, although it is frustrating when we're trying to have family gatherings and people over, um, I would hate to, down the road, have that be the cause of somebody not being able to get the care that they needed. So I think that is, that is important to have. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember McGinn.
I would just like to add that, um, if anyone is having a large party, you can always call the city and get a permit to have parking at that point. But as a person who lives in a cul-de-sac, uh, although in the newer part of the city, it is vital that we're able to get emergency vehicles through there. And ours were especially, um, the streets are very tight. And I can tell you that every time the UPS truck goes around and, and misses the corner and tears up all the, you know, the, um, grass and that. But beyond that, it's, I've seen our fire trucks struggle to get through there, even with par, no parking on one side. It is a struggle. So hopefully in the future, we won't see cul-de-sacs at, at, and streets at that, uh, that width. So, um, but if you have a, a large event, you can certainly call the city.
All right, seems like there's another, I'll entertain a motion on the contract.
Move to approve a professional engineering design and
Did you?
Yeah.
You guys voted against it?
Oh, did we? We did.
Not.
All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes.
Move to approve a professional engineering design and construction support services contract to Bolton &amp; Mink Inc. in the not to exceed amount of one, one hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-five, or excuse me, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars for the 2024 street and utility improvements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Yeah, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes. Item number nineteen, old city facilities comprehensive plan amendment and zoning map amendment ordinance 2023 dash 22, resolution 2023 dash 117, and resolution 2023 dash 118.
I think we skipped over the county, um, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, we did.
So Sophia's just going to go up there to help pull their presentation out.
Just, it's been a long week and my apologies, and it's only Tuesday. We're going to have Washington County's proposed projects for regional funding solicitations. Mr. Kevin Peterson, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. As stated, good evening, my name is Kevin Peterson. Um, as noted, um, congratulations on the new building as well. It's beautiful in here. Um, I serve as Washington County's design engineer. I'm joined tonight by Sarah Allen, a senior planner in our public works department. Uh, County Commissioner Kresel sends his regrets for not making it tonight. He had another conflict, so apologize for him not being here. Uh, we're here tonight to provide a brief update and on our request for letters of support for three applications for federal regional solicitation funding. Here's a brief overview of our presentation tonight. Uh, just a quick outline on the regional solicitation process. Um, and then just one quick slide on each project that we're looking to apply for. So the federal regional solicitation process is a competitive process for federal funds. It is administered by the Metropolitan Council. Uh, it occurs every two years. Uh, the program funds that we are applying for are in, for construction in the years of 2028 and 2029. Um, and as you'll see here, applications are due on December fifteenth of this year. Um, just for recent reference, uh, Washington County with Lake Elmo's support was successful in securing regional solicitation funds for intersection improvements to Lake Elmo Avenue and Highway 36. We also secured these funds for improvements at Manning Avenue and Highway 36. So on to the first of our three projects. Uh, this project falls in the strategic capacity or roadway expansion category of the regional solicitation funding. This project is on Manning Avenue from Stillwater Boulevard up to the Stillwater High School. Uh, this project would complete the long-term vision of a four-lane expansion here from two to four lanes. Um, this would also include adding multi-use trails on both sides of the roadway. Um, that is consistent with the Central Greenway corridor multi, multi-use trail plan. Uh, we would also look at intersection improvements for the many intersections along this corridor. Um, this would be set up for 2029 construction. Um, and we've also requested letters of support from Oak Park Heights and Baytown Township. The second corridor project, uh, which actually falls in the reconstruction and modernization category, is on Lake Elmo Avenue, our county highway seventeen, from Stillwater Boulevard to Forty-third Street. Uh, this, as you know, is a very growing residential area, um, adjacent to the existing Lake Elmo Elementary School. Um, the, the high-level plan here would be to reconstruct this two-lane highway as another two-lane highway, uh, but adding turn lanes and center medians to, to better channelize traffic. Uh, we'd also be looking at multi-use trails on both sides of the road here as well. The final project we plan to apply for in this area, um, is installing a battery backup system at several traffic signals in our, in our system. Um, this would be about thirty signalized intersections, um, along CASA thirteen and CASA sixteen. Actually, the only intersection within Lake Elmo that would, that would utilize this system would be at Inwood Avenue and Hudson Boulevard. The intersection at County Highway ten and County Highway thirteen already has this system installed. Um, I'm told too, that this area actually loses power quite a bit. This battery backup system would, would immediately trigger, um, allowing the signal to operate normally when power's out, um, instead of triggering into that red flash. Um, we'd look to construct this in 2028, um, but given, you know, the relative simplicity of this project, we could look at advancing that too to get it done sooner. I think in closing, I just want to share that these projects were selected due to the transportation multimodal benefits that they bring and based on our understanding of their higher chance for success with this program. Providing the requested letters of support does not change our community-based project delivery process, which we would formally kick off if these funds are awarded. With that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll stand for any questions.
So I do have a question related to, I think it was, uh, CASA seventeen in particular, and potentially Manning. You mentioned trails in there. Is that part of the, the Greenway corridor project? That, that would be, encompass that?
Mr. Mayor, the, the trails proposed on Manning Avenue would be part of the Central Greenway Trail. Uh, right now, the, the ultimate build actually doesn't go up Lake Elmo Avenue. It follows County Highway fourteen or Stillwater Boulevard through town.
Got it.
There is an alternate route that goes north onto Thirty-Ninth Street. Um, that, that could be used in interim until that trail is built on Stillwater Boulevard.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember McGinn.
Um, can you tell me, is there a ba, battery backup at Inwood and Tenth at this point? Did they put that in when they put that light in?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember, yes, there is one there.
Thank you.
Councilmember Holtz.
Uh, Mr. Peterson, in terms of the interchange at Lake Elmo Avenue fourteen, right now, what would that project entail? For how far east and west would some of those pathway, paths be extended?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, councilmember Holtz, uh, at this point, we, we don't really know. You know, we haven't dove into the details. Um, likely would be confined, you know, as tightly as possible at that intersection. Uh, we have identified a study actually east and west on Stillwater Boulevard in our capital improvement plan. I believe that's scheduled to start in 2026. So that's an area we know we want to look at and study thoroughly before we really, you know, present any alternatives going east and west of that intersection.
And then second question.
Go ahead.
Because I know we just did the tra, traffic signal at Thirty-first Street and Manning. And some of that was to help relieve congestion and the traffic issues on Manning at that stretch. Am I correct to presume that the reason why Manning north of fourteen was selected for four-lane is just that's your phasing timeline, that comes first before four-lane south of fourteen?
Yeah, councilmember Holtz, there's a few different answers to that question, actually. Right now, we're working with staff on improvements to Manning Avenue between County Highway ten or Tenth Street and Thirty-first Street. Um, ultimately, we would like to see that expanded to four-lane. But the project we're working on now is really more of an interim, you know, adding turn lanes, replacing the pavement, um, looking at drainage. We believe that will, you know, satisfy that corridor for at least a, a few more years here. Um, so, so I guess, and then also, you know, given the Central Greenway Trail, and then also just the congestion near the school, we really felt like this kind of north piece of that four-lane expansion was, was really about ready now and becoming a priority pretty quickly.
Gotcha. And, and the root for the question is that the feedback, at least I give it, is far more for the section south of Thirty-first than north of fourteen. But obviously, you are far more aware of the data itself. So I, that's just the root of the question.
Yeah, councilmember, we're hearing that, that the tides are changing. Um, coincidentally, we, we, we studied the four-lane expansion for the full corridor, golly, ten-ish years ago, and it, it wasn't supported at that time. So, so we have pivoted that more interim project and we're now trying to kind of chunk out the four-lane expansion as opposed to a, you know, larger, lengthier project.
Gotcha, thank you. And thank you for the presentation.
Any further? All right, I'll enter, thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Move. Move to direct the city administrator to prepare and submit letters of support to Washington County on behalf of the City of Lake Elmo for regional funding applications for improvements to Lake Elmo Ave, CASA seventeen from Stillwater Boulevard, CASA fourteen to Forty-third Street, for improvements to Manning Avenue, CASA fifteen from Stillwater Boulevard, CASA fourteen to Stillwater High School, and for traffic signal battery backup systems.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second for letters of support to be drawn up for Washington County. Is there any discussion?
Get it done.
None, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, none, motion passes. Now we'll go to number nineteen, old facility, old city facilities comprehensive plan amendment and zoning map amendment ordinance 2023 dash 22, resolution 2023 dash 17, and resolution 2023 dash 118.
Thank you, Mayor. Given our current, or a recent transition to the new city center, the city is now looking to list the nine parcels that comprise the old Fire Hall and Parks Building for sale in the upcoming year. If approved, the amendments will provide more opportunities to potential buyers. The proposed uses and easement dedication will occur as part of future development. Before you tonight is only the rezoning and re-guidance. An RFP would come before you, um, when the properties are ready to be listed. So the first part of tonight's request is to change the zoning of the parcels from public facilities to village mixed use. The zoning district public facilities has limited uses within that district. The only uses allowed are museums and libraries, schools, cemeteries, municipal buildings, religious institutions, and historical sites. If approved, the proposed uses expand significantly. Um, items include residential uses, public and civic uses, business services, food services, personal services, sales of merchandise, indoor recreation, parking facility, and there's a handful more that would be included. I will note that the rezoning, if approved, would blend into the existing neighboring zoning districts. The parcels are currently a mint green color. They'd move to that reddish pink color with the orange circles. The second part of tonight's request is to change the land use guidance. The land use guidance and zoning should be consistent with each other. They go hand in hand. So in order to change the zoning, the guidance also needs to be amended. The current guidance of these parcels is institutional, um, denoted by an I, which is the comp plan version or met council's version of public facilities. With this request, we'd be transitioning that to village mixed use. Again, similar to the zoning map amendment with the change, the parcels blend into the neighboring parcels in terms of guidance. So proposal analysis, any change to the comp plan should be based on findings and criteria to show the change would be consistent with the city's goals, policies, and intent. And with that, the zoning map should be consistent with the future land use guidance. Again, those two items go hand in hand. I do have one proposed condition for you tonight with the zoning map amendment, and that is that the zoning map amendment will be contingent upon city council approval and met council approval of the comp plan amendment. Moving on to public comment and review by the planning commission. A public hearing was sent to surrounding property owners on November first and published in the local paper on November third. Staff received one public comment. This was spoken at the planning commission meeting from John Schultz. He is the owner of the Lake Elmo Inn at three four four two Lake Elmo Avenue. He spoke at the public hearing advocating for the use of the parcel as a parking lot to support businesses and events within the old village area. The planning commission reviewed this at their November thirteenth meeting, and they voted to recommend approval of both requests. Uh, votes on those items were both six to zero. Moving on to the recommended findings, I have five before you. In summary, the first one is outlining what the comp plan amendment is for, which is regiding the parcels from institutional to village mixed use. The second finding is about the zoning map amendment and what that is for, which is public facilities to village mixed use. The third and fourth are outlining that the amendments are consistent with the city's comp plan and city zoning code. And the fifth one is stating that the amendments are consistent and compatible with surrounding, uh, land uses and properties. With that, I have three motions for you. The first one is for the comp plan amendment. The next one is for the zoning map amendment, and the final one is summary of publication. And with that, I can stand for questions.
Councilmember Holtz.
Thank you, Sophia, for that. I don't, I don't have it memorized in terms of the uses for that, for that zone. Are there, at least from your perspective, especially for a downtown area, are there common uses that really aren't incorporated into the village mixed use that, at this point? I mean, I know we have mult, like you had it in there. I know there's, there's very good quality uses. Are there other ones that we should also be, as we get closer to the eventual, um, putting out to bid date? Are there other things that we should be thinking about or starting to contemplate?
Not that I'm aware of. Village mixed use is our largest use zoning district. So it, it does provide many opportunities.
Thank you.
Councilmember McGinn.
Um, the change, the change from the current, uh, public facilities to the village mixed use, can you speak to, or maybe the city administrator speak to, um, what you might expect in changes of water use?
Um, councilmember, again, until we know what the use of the property is going to be, that's really hard to, to estimate. As, um, the city planner just mentioned, the, it's a very broad array. Uh, you know, I think, so tonight, you're looking at the, um, comp plan and zoning changes. We'll follow a process similar to what we did for the one hundred and eighty acres with a, an RFP, and you'll be able to review those criteria and proposals, um, and, you know, make a decision at that time about whether or not you want to move forward with a proposal.
Is this, is this type of, um, change consistent that, that we see in other cities as far as, um, once a public facility, is it no use to the city, uh, that you would change that type of use? To be more reflective of maybe in the downtown area? I mean, this
I, I can't think of any examples, maybe the city planner does, but, um, I can't imagine, um, why any city would leave it institutional. Unless they didn't want to have some development there, I guess. You know, there's, institutional is very limited. Um, it's s, city buildings, churches, I think, schools, maybe Sophia knows those. So, um, I can't think of an example in another city, but I think
So I can't think of an example in another city, but I think this idea of having it blend in with what's around it is very common.
Yeah, I, I'm just concerned if, if, if we leave it as public facilities, the land will be empty for a very long time. And consistent, I, I believe with the EDA, that's where my concern is, is that we have been trying to increase our vision for the downtown area. So, thank you.
Yeah, in the, in the, I guess I don't have a question. I can wait.
Yeah, that's why, shut up.
Councilmember Hearn?
Thanks for asking that. That was my question too, because, just to clarify, so the next step would be RFP. So before anybody could possibly move into these locations and use it for, and, and increase water usage, we are going to be doing the RFP. So we still have that step where we can still have time to try to figure out the water solution before we're approving any type of increased water usage.
Correct. There are a few steps. One of those would be if approved tonight, this would still need to go to met council for their approval.
Okay.
So we, we still have some time.
Maybe that's, and that was my next question, just that, the sentence about the sector representative from the met council has waived the affected jurisdiction notification requirement for the comprehensive plan amendment due to the location and size of the proposed amendment. So that, that's not saying that they still need to approve this?
Correct.
If you can maybe just clarify that sentence for me, help me understand that.
So if it was a parcel that would be close enough to adjacent or jurisdictions that could be affected, like a, a neighboring city, MinDOT, the county, then we would need to send that out for comment to those, those folks for 60 days. So the sector rep waived that 60-day period because of the location and the size of the parcels.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember McGinn?
Just one more question. This area, where does that fall in our comp plan as far as building? Is it between 2025 or 2030?
I believe it was in, it is in the current phasing, or it was 2020 in current because of the sewer staging that occurred.
It's at least current. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Hearing none? entertain a motion?
Motion to adopt ordinance 2023 dash 2022 approving the zoning map amendment of the nine parcels that comprise the old Fire Hall and Parks Building from public facilities to village mixed use based on the findings and subject to the conditions listed in the staff report.
Is there a second? Second. Any discussion?
I, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
So I thought the, the planning commission had a great discussion, and I, John's comment about the parking, I think, is, is definitely something to think about. I think it's also a great area for helping the downtown grow from a business standpoint. So I'm not saying that I think it should just all be parking lot, but I think that's a really good thing for us to be considering as we discuss further and as we're thinking about the RFPs and talking to future businesses about this. I have a business in downtown Lake Elmo. I'm excited about this. The, the area keeps growing. The businesses are all excited and passionate down there. Whenever we have events, people are coming. It's growing and growing each year, so I just, I'm excited to see this happening. My only concern is the water thing, so hopefully we can keep on figuring that out. So we can, so I feel comfortable also approving any sort of requests for proposal that we do receive.
Councilmember Holtz?
I'm excited for this opportunity. Obviously, the fire department is very excited to move into a facility that met city code, and it's the small things. And this location is a great location in terms of being able to benefit the city, our long-term plans, our residents. And as Councilmember Hearn mentioned, business development. I do think as the ball starts to roll a little bit and we start to get into the new year, I think it'd be a worthwhile question if we as a council may, want to maybe have a, a workshop with a planning commission and maybe with business owners and residents and have kind of a, a group think as to slightly independent of the RFP itself, just what are we looking for in, in this location? And maybe in terms of even larger than that location. This, this obviously is coming up now, but I do think there's an opportunity to kind of have a refresh on the conversation that the city had, you know, five years ago when we brought in the University of Minnesota Urban Land Institute. And had a quality discussion about if you value your downtown, what should you be doing? And I, throwing it out there as, as an example, do you start to look at new overlay maps? That, that's one example, but thi- this is, this is a great opportunity where you can get the ball rolling on it. And I, I think it is a, going to be a benefit to the city and to our residents.
I, I just wanted to note that we did discuss this property in the EDA meeting that happened earlier this evening. You know, the thought was kind of a cost, minimum cost for the parcels. Just so the council knows, we were thinking of leaving it as one and not separating it and let whoever buys it figure out if they're going to use the whole thing or half of it and sell the other half or however it got deemed up. I think we all know that the buildings that are in place will require quite a bit of work to make it to code. And so hoping that, you know, having it a little open that way will give somebody the opportunity with a vision to make it nice and, and work, work within the city of Lake Elmo, the downtown old village area. So those were some discussions we had, and I'm sure those will come forward at a later date.
Good memory.
I think, and that's going to be great. I mean, that opens up for the opportunity to create something versus trying to make it work with what's there.
Right.
Right.
All right, so there's the second motion. Somebody have that?
Make sure you vote on first one.
She ain't Christmas. I apologize. All those in favor of, uh, resolution 2023 dash 117, please signify by saying aye.
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 None opposed?
I don't know if that was the motion. The motion was for the zoning map amendment. He, he went to the middle one instead of the first one, Mayor.
Let's go to, sorry. I did mess that up.
It's okay. You can take them in that order.
23 dash 117. That's why.
I did the 2023 dash 22.
Yeah, he's good.
Well, go back to that one. Now I'm really messing up.
Do, do two, three, and one now. Do it in that order, Councilmember.
Go back to one.
Motion to adopt ordinance 2023 dash 2022 was the original motion, is what you're saying?
Correct.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, can we go back?
Then do the summary publication one, because that's for the ordinance you just passed.
To adopt summary of publication of ordinance 2023 dash 22 with approval of resolution 2023 dash 118.
Second.
All right, all those in favor of the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we have a resolution on the summary.
Since I messed it up. Motion to adopt resolution 2023 dash 117 approving the comprehensive plan amendment of the nine parcels that comprise the old Fire Hall and Parks Building from institutional to village mixed use based on the findings listed in the staff report.
Second.
Second. All those in favor of resolution 2023 dash 117, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Thank you, Sophia. Item number 23, 20 is summary of closed session on November 14th, 2023. We had a closed session for the, um, review of the city administrator. And upon that completion, let me pull it up here. No. The city council, the city council has held the city administrator's performance review on November 14th, 2023 in closed session. The performance review covered the following aspects. Personal, professional skills and status, relations with the mayor and city council, policy execution, reporting, citizen relations, staffing, supervision, and fiscal management. The overall status for performance was between satisfactory and above-average ratings for performance with the areas noted for improvement. It is noted there has been improvement in areas identified in the previous year. Moving forward, the council has confidence in Christina's act and Christina's ability to act on the duties and obligations for the city of Lake Elmo as a city administrator. Councilmember Holtz?
So in the, the week that, that I've had since the discussion, and I appreciate the feedback that we had. Obviously, we can't discuss it here. I guess I was going to offer a, a motion at this point, and we'll see what happens. I, I move to not renew the city administrator contract and to authorize the mayor and legal to recruit and bring to council a candidate for interim administrator approval at that time.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion. Councilmember Holtz?
I appreciate, um, the work and time that our city minister has put to our city. I also do feel that organizations have a opportu- that organizations can change, and that's okay. And I guess that is where this motion comes from, and I have a great, I have a hard time with it, but I do feel that I need, at, at this time for the city, I want to make this motion. And again, I, and there's always, yeah.
Anyone else? Councilmember McGinn?
Uh, first of all, we do not have full council. And for such an important decision to be made by council, it should be the full council. Beyond that, I have been the longest-serving council member that has served with Christina Hand. And the, her ability to have brought this city from extreme turmoil and dysfunction to where we are today. Her professional skills are, especially administratively and historically for this city, have been, in my opinion, outstanding. While we can all talk about our differences in our communication style, I'm very concerned that there has been outside influences, especially regarding school district issues in the past, of which I don't personally believe that our city made, was part of that difficulty, if you will. I'm concerned that, I, we have asked Administrator Hand to make some changes in her communication style. And she has made very, very good progress. And to terminate somebody who is as qualified as she is at this point, I have grave concern for the city moving forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Hearn?
I do agree that progress has been made. However, I believe that as the mo- like Councilmember Holtz, uh, Councilmember Holtz mentioned, with where we are at now and where we are going, that is where I do have more concerns. This is tough, but I, I have more concerns about the, the future with, based off of history, and, and, because I'm going to look at history. I do have concerns with where we're going with the future. I know progress has been made, but I don't think that is the only thing that we take into consideration when we're making this decision. I know it's not the only thing that we're taking into consideration. We're taking into consideration the future, and that's where my concern is.
Councilmember?
Call. Councilmember McGinn?
Councilmember Hearn, you've been on council less than a year.
Correct.
And do you really think that gives you enough experience as to where we've been and the struggles that we have been through?
Point, point, point of order, questioning somebody's time on the.
I'll speak to that.
No, but it's not, it's not appropriate. He's earned the right to be on the council by a vote. He was elected. And questioning somebody's ability to make their opinion is not appropriate.
But when you're asking about history, he's judging her.
Point of clarification, can we make sure we get guidance from Therese and Sala about what we can and cannot say in an open session in terms of any employee?
I think it's pretty clear that you don't discuss what was discussed in closed session in a performance review.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that is correct, although, although under the Minnesota Government Data Practices Act, the council can discuss private data in a public meeting without penalty.
Well, I, I mean, I'll speak to Councilmember McGinn's comment about myself. Thank you. I, you know, I was elected here. I think that's enough of validation for me to, to make this decision. I think it also speaks volumes that I've been here for less than a year and I feel that way. This isn't my first year living in Lake Elmo. I've been here. I've had experiences with Administrator Hand before I was even on council. I, I I find it interesting that you question my judgment on it. I mean, that makes me can, what about every other judgment I make up here?
I'm not asking about your judgment. I'm asking why, with, with the time you've served, what, what brings you to that point?
Well, I, I could go into the details. I don't think it'd be professional. I'd prefer to not have to give all the examples.
Point of order, there's a motion on the table, and per Roberts rules, we each take one turn, and.
Like to invoke that, that's fine. I know that we've talked multiple times on, on motions previously, but I will entertain the motion provider's request. I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion to terminate the contract with the administrator and move into the area of locating an interim administrator? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign.
Nay.
Thank you.
And would you please accept my resignation?
Sure. So we will have a resignation from Councilmember McGinn.
Attorney Sinsala, can I ask as a council, what is the council's next step when that occurs? And given, um, in this case, a resignation occurred for someone elected in 2022. I know there's a process, and it depends upon how much time is left. For council's awareness, then what are our next steps?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if there are more than two years remaining in the term, there needs to be a special election for that council seat held at the next general election. Otherwise, the council may declare a vacancy and appoint. And that process can be anything the council desires, whether you want to interview people or advertise or just select somebody that is interested. It's up to the council.
Okay.
In light of that, okay, so to clarify, we could, we can, because the next general election is not for a year.
Correct.
So in order to have a fifth, we need to, we would need to take a motion to say that we want to engage and post for that type of interim appointment?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you're going to need to adopt a resolution declaring a vacancy, which I can do at the next meeting. I wasn't prepared for this. At, at that point, I can flush out the, the election issue because it is very specific under the statute.
I, I for one, I mean, we can make a motion too, but I think that would be appropriate to the, I, I'm shocked actually, and I'm, I'm saddened. But I, the city deserves to have a full council to represent its, its thirteen thousand plus residents. So I, I think that would be good to make sure we have an inter, a, um, appointment until the next general election.
Okay. We can discuss that in the December fifth meeting. So, next item is council reports. Councilmember Holtz.
We are, Lake Elmo has a, has multiple school districts as part of our boundary. One of them is six twenty-two. And I did see, I came across, saw it in a couple of different places, but one of their high school choirs actually did the national anthem for the Timberwolves November twentieth, and they nailed it extremely well. And I just want to give a shout out. I don't know if there are any Lake Elmo residents who are part of that choir. I hope they are because they, they nailed it. It was beautiful. And just kudos to them.
All right. I have nothing.
No report.
Staff reports. Ms. Johnson?
No report, Mr. Hearn.
Ms. Gores?
No report.
Johnson?
No report.
Jack?